...Regional High School Board of Education, please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on your side in this long, and that is justice, law, Open Public Meetings Act statement. New Jersey Open Public Meetings law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Board of Education has caused notices of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Augusta, Branchville, and Sussex post offices and notice sent to the New Jersey Herald, the Sunday Herald, and the clerk of the boroughs of Branchville and Sussex and the townships of Frankfurt, Lafayette, and Wantage. Mission statement. High Point High School, in partnership with staff, family, and community, is dedicated to the quest for individual excellence. By fostering high standards of achievement, we prepare students to become responsible and productive members of a diverse society. May I ask for a roll call, please?
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Ms. Balsack?
Here.
Ms. Diaz? Ms. Shuman? Ms. Gall?
Here.
Mr. Vanstone?
Here.
Ms. Lombard?
Here.
Ms. Wise? Ms. Orsi?
Here.
Dr. Ridley?
Here.
We have a form.
Okay. A motion will now be made that the High Point Regional High School Board of Education enter executive session to provide an update on legal personnel and negotiations items which are exempt from public participation pursuant to New Jersey Public Law nineteen seventy five, Chapter two thirty one, Open Public Meetings Act. Any discussions held by the board which need not remain confidential will be made public when appropriate. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. The Board will reconvene in public session, in person and virtually, at the conclusion of the executive session. It is not anticipated that any action will be taken and for those attending virtually, we expect that to be approximately seven p.m. I'll make that motion in a minute's time.
Sir.
One favor?
I have a motion to return to public session.
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we're back in public session. Approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes from September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, and executive session minutes from September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. I'm making motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
Any comments, discussion, corrections?
Ms. Palcak?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Longenbur?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Duff?
Yes.
Our first public comments, section of the evening. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, we will open the public comments for agenda items only at this time. Speakers should state his or her name and address. You have three minutes to address the board, which will be timed by myself. We will limit this section to no longer than forty-five minutes. Please be respectful and mindful that your comments are being recorded. So, I see no potential comments in the room. Do we have anything submitted online?
No.
May I have a motion to close public comments?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, presentations. Our student representative, Speaker of the House, George Oriana, will give us an update on the activities of student council. You can speak from your desk if you prefer, because you're one of us. But if you want to go to the podium, that's all right, too. Whatever you feel more comfortable with.
Hey, everybody. Nice to see you all here. I'm George as well now. And just for a few updates for, as of right now, what's going on in school. Right now, we are in the middle of Red Ribbon Week, and we are doing some activities related to that, as well as some Halloween-related activities. So far, on Monday, we've done a Wear Red Day, where we've done also some duty giveaways and putting the hook together activities. And then today, Tuesday, we had students wear their favorite team jersey and also have, and also two breaks to do drugs on neon stuff giveaway. And tomorrow, we're going to be doing some pumpkin tasting, which the student council had bought each pumpkin for a dollar a piece for a total of a hundred pumpkins. And then on Thursday, there is also another pajama day, as well as giving away the rest of the bags. And then on Friday, the students are able to wear costumes and go around on a trick-or-treating trail, as well as vote on the doors that teachers had decorated outside of their classrooms. There are currently five themes that will be going on. Best overall door, most horrible, best individual connection to their department, say art for art classes and such, best department collaboration, the multiple doors, and best Halloween spirit. And then, as of right now, there are two activities to note, or at least two classes that I know is for. Class of twenty-twenty-six, the senior class, they have the senior formal November fifth, next Wednesday, at the Hilton Bridge. And the class of twenty-twenty-eight, the sophomore class, they are doing a Purge Off Chocolate Bar candy stable fundraiser. And some, and the one relevant note from last month is that the student council had bought a seven-cub foot freezer for the concession stands, so that way they can start selling ice cream in order to make more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the HBA President, Zuvat Sundup. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Sorry, I'm a couple minutes late. I wanted to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to everyone who has actively supported my transition into the role of the HBA president. It is an incredible responsibility as a learning, one that comes with both great opportunity and a very steep learning curve. Our executive union team is made up of a dedicated, experienced group of educators, who, some of which are new to the team like me, and new to this capacity of leadership. This includes Mark Russell, who's been my vice president. He's doing an exceptional job. I feel like on first floor, we're taking him up to the second floor, but he has been incredible, so I'm grateful for him. As well as Stacy Zaramba, who, Dr. Zaramba, who is my secretary. Christina DiMatteo is the treasurer. Ben Kappeler as our grievance chair. Leon Hennings as our membership chair. And Aaron Bang as our sunshine committee. As president, it is my role to strengthen the esteem and also to strengthen the relationships with the staff and build new ones as well, where they're needed. I firmly believe that our school community can only thrive when we work together. Our students flourish when they feel valued, and I would argue that the same is true for our faculty, staff, and administration. With this in mind, we extend our sincere thanks to the administration for helping set a strong foundation for this school year. The implementation of the new cell phone policy has already made a noticeable difference in our hallways and classrooms, and this progress would not be possible without the consistent support and responsiveness of our administrators, so thank you. I also wanted to acknowledge our faculty and our staff, who time and again go above and beyond to ensure that our students receive the highest quality education. On behalf of our union membership, I also want to thank the Board, the Board Office for their support as we fully transition to our current contract. We recognize and respect the logistical and financial challenges involved, which makes it all the more impressive that the faculty and staff retroactive checks were distributed this past weekend, so we are very grateful. Thank you so much for them. And also, I'd like to thank you, the Board of Education. Serving as the union president definitely has given me a deeper appreciation of the complexity and the nuances of nearly every aspect of education. I look forward to collaborating with you in pursuit of our shared goals and mission here at public language on my school. Also, I'd like to thank Scott, who's been super supportive of me, and John, I truly love our meetings that we have when we sit down together. The lines of communication have been fantastic, so I'm very grateful. And I also, this is a side note, this Thursday, our newly-elected CEO, Union Assistant at JBA President CB, will be bringing lunch here to High Point during the lunch. So he will be here, as well as SSDS County Education Association resident Angela DeLucia will be here, and our UNIS for GRIP, Henry John Fine. This is open to all staff, admin as well, so we're having it, hosting it up in the Roadkill. I met him over the summer, and so he's new on here, we just thought it was nice just to kind of network. So he offered to bring us lunch, sandwiches, salads, that kind of thing. So we're going to host it up in the Roadkill Thursday on the thirtieth, so if you're around and you want to stop by, our lunch is from like ten-thirty to eleven-thirty. Salads, beverage, paper goods, whatever. But he will be here, like I said, up top, and he might stick around. You can just pop in right through the door, or you can say and chit-chat with him, but that's all I think I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And sorry, I just didn't want to leave anything out, so thank you.
Thank you. Next is our principals' report, Mr. John Colmich.
Good evening, everybody, again. Thank you very much for asking for reports, and I look forward to the continued partnership all the time. So just wanted to give a principal's report update like you should do, and then we're going to all do the SSDS report as well, which is a little bit different side of things, but we have to talk about all of these things that are part of education. So as you can see behind me, actually, this is a good subject, because of my opening for principal's report, the award ceremony, which will be on October eighth. We're honored, this doesn't capture all the students, but it captures most of them, so we honor over a hundred students for high honor roll, for marking periods, last year's, or last year's academic achievements, plus AP awards, plus other merit awards as well. And the best part, I don't know if you can really see it in the picture, we make the students stand up, and you can't see that what we're talking to them is, make sure you smile, make sure you take your time and take the picture, but you can see all the parents on the bottom half with their thumbs up. Because that moment that they get to take those pictures, right, even though the students like my own daughter doesn't like to stand in the picture very often, to smile, is pretty cool. So you can see all the pictures being taken up there, but again, over our students are recognized, and we're very proud of their achievements every single day. It's nice to bring a ceremony together like that for the achievements. Also, in October, in early, late September, we had two fantastic student assemblies. One was called Digital Dilemma, which focused on just what it says, social media, cell phones, the impact on that, on everybody, not just young adults, adolescents, and everybody as well, like the fairer O C. We also had recently a new program recording called the No Hate Tour. It's actually a BMX assembly that was just as it sounds in our gym. And we had four BMX professionals that were exchange champions that were talking about how to be the bystander in a positive way, and anti-bullying prevention activities along the way. So their message was around bullet prevention and awareness, but they brought it with a completely different spin, and our gym was just electrified and filled with a lot of, a lot of fun. I had to get up on the stage and get jumped over, which wasn't part of the plan, but we did anyway, we had a good time along the way. So that was two very O C programs. Both of those were funded by outside grants for an outside organization. What I mean by that is the digital loan was funded by an outside grant. The No Hate BMX Tour was funded this year by the Marines. Every year, it's a national tour, it's on a national circuit. Each year sponsored by somebody else, this year sponsored by the Marines as well, and they have the Marines over there, and they did a little bit of a piece of that as well. We also, as George mentioned, a lot of activities that are taking place. Student Council, Mrs. Begon initiating our Red Ribbon Week, which is really slow, and a lot of activities that George so eloquently highlighted already. And then we also have a question of the day that's going out to our student body from Mrs. Begon, and that gives us a chance to kind of be more aware of substances that are around us, particularly for adolescents as well. We also had earlier in October, our state students sponsoring Week of Respect activities. We had a P S set up over here by the media center, as well as up front. That becomes two good hubs during our unit lunch, where student activities can be led, initiated every single time. And again, it's not just about the week, but we like to make sure we highlight those weeks that come up throughout the time period as well. Also, this month, we had a busy, it's a little bit of a mix of athletics as well, while there's that, but a very busy month for our fall athletics. We had many senior nights that were playing quarterly, and it's very fun to see our senior parents out there with all of our student athletes. We also had Play Pink and Kents are wearing events as well throughout this, this last, really last two weeks. So our boys soccer team had a Play Pink game, our field hockey team had a Play Pink game, our volleyball team had their first ever Dig for a Cure game in the gym, filled with pink, and packed house. If you haven't had a chance to watch a volleyball game, our volleyball team's up and coming, their best record ever so far this year. They had a packed house on that night, it was just a fun, fantastic night. So our student athletes had a good, had a good time, community. And then last but surely not least, our girls soccer team had a Pick for a Cure game as well, all on a football field. So kudos to Mr. Dexter and all of our coaches for highlighting those events that are community events. It's not about the dollar amount that you raise, it's about coming together as a community and being a part of something that's special. So I want to make sure that our coaches, our players, our parents, Mr. Dexter, get the credit for, for all those things. We also have eighth grade tours early this month, brought all the eighth graders in on two different days. And that was very, very well seen by both our students, but also by eighth grade students as well. I had a chance to meet with our eighth grade industry principals, I meet them every month, the week after that, and we all have positive feedback from the eighth graders that we are seeing at High Point for the first time tonight. Many of them have siblings, and they're here for, when they're growing up, and kind of those things, but many of them are here for the first time, so a good chance to see that. That's led by Ms. Jacky and our peer leaders, so kudos to them, because they are the face of the school. The peer leaders are out there, we have thirty or forty kids, present at High Point, and everyone's at High Point very well, and we're very appreciative of that. Also, this past month, this past weekend actually, rehearsal for murder, congratulations to student study unit, David Smith, and all of our theater students, our tech students, our lighting students that made that cushion in that fall play very, very successful. They're looking forward already, they have a couple weeks of, I guess, downtime to call it back, and they're getting ready for our pre-technical court day as well. So our students do and continue to do a fantastic job. They shine all over the place, not just at the field, but on the theater. Marching Band is having a fantastic season this year, they have a state tournament coming up this weekend as well. So just a lot of great things that are keeping doing direction at High Point very, very well, and we're very happy and proud of that. Speaking of state playoffs, we've talked about the marching band and the state competition on Saturday, football team, volleyball, girls soccer, boys soccer, cross-country, who does the coach, and girls tennis, all are participating, whoops, and the state tournament in this next week's time. So a busy schedule. Again, it's not about always making it to the states, but it is a nice thing to be able to have that achievement, and then the ever now, right? As you can see, never knows what's happening again, so just again, thanking to our student athletes and our coaches. And also wanted to give a shout out to our trainer, John Meyer, who keeps our athletes as healthy as they can be when the seasons get long. And as Coach Sundup knows, the seasons get long, we have injuries that happen, and we have battles for those things, so it really is a complete team effort. George also brings the senior formalized next week, next Wednesday for our students, I believe. Last count, I was advancing, we had like a hundred and fifty, almost a hundred and sixty students going to our senior class, which is one of our highest numbers ever. So I'm very, very happy about that, and so it's a great event to happen. Also, on the same day, no coincidence, but that's the end of our first marking period as well, the fifth. So that came fast, I was talking to my daughter about that, it feels like you're in the middle of summer, so I'm on vacation now, maybe I was talking about the end of the first marking period.
Any questions on any of that report?
I just wanted to say thank you about the award ceremony. As a parent, you know, my son was a freshman last year, I had no idea that this was a thing, got an invitation to it, and it was really a very nice event, very positive, so I appreciate that.
Thanks, appreciate that. And again, it's something that's tradition that we've, we've tweaked along the way. We wanted to try to highlight everybody in that capacity, and it's something that we honor. Anything else? All right, now shifting gears, I'm supposed to do this quicker?
Yeah, I like this picture, this picture's a good picture, keep that up. I'm going to give an overview of the SSDS, which was called E D D R S back in the day, because they may remember that. It's the same system overall, there's not really a difference between the state kind of finding changes a little bit differently as well. So I will try to progress through this, and more than happy to answer any questions along the way as I go through that. I guess, I'm going to show this is our overall recording for this school year. So we're recording our last year's numbers, right, last year's success, what it always looks like in terms of that. Again, real quick, to clarify yourself, this is what the state requirement is for what gets reported over the course of time. By the standards of what we're supposed to use in any S I Bs, that's the required categories. Each one of those categories then has multiple subcategories, that makes any sense at all, we're trying to get lost all aspects of these are the main categories that the state is looking at for their, for our reports. This, if you can see it, is our historical SSDS data. I want to highlight a couple things before I kind of talk about the outline numbers there on the side, which is that. As Assistant Principal of many years ago, a few years ago, in fact, if I remember those good days, I would have to report on this as well. I've seen trends go up and down over the course of time. One constant that remains, that I believe that we've always been very forefront about, just like Mr. Campbell was involved in reporting all the data, reporting about our data. We have been for all the time that I can remember, and that's important transparency. That doesn't change or eliminate numbers, and numbers can be perceived and received differently, but I believe they were consistently in the right spot with our numbers. So these numbers reflect, again, just seventeen, eighteen, twenty-four, twenty-five, being last year's number. And again, the categories we talked about, of the five categories, here they are listed again. I strongly want to have a, right, have a fill down on last year's particular numbers. I strongly believe, as an educator, as a principal, as a former assistant principal, and as a parent, that COVID and legalization, and I'm not going to get on a platform here since education and marijuana has impacted us greatly here in education. If you look at the number change, obviously, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, twenty-one, it was not only because the whole world shut down. And then twenty-one, twenty-two, the world was shut down for half of those years, and we all and we all can remember that we can make back in cohorts, and then eventually we'll open up all our doors. Those numbers that represented that substance abuse and inhibit those years were really the last two months of that school year, 2021. Again, reflective of post-COVID aspect of it. Also key, it's not how that year explained to make point of it, that too, I think, as an impact on society and as an impact on us, education was, marijuana legalization took place in 2021, 22, right after COVID. That in fact makes it accessible and acceptable all across our school. So the parameters, if you've seen the highest numbers, 32, 39, and 44, right, again, not hiding from the numbers, right, I do believe are relevant to a societal shift that education's experiencing. Student experiences, I'm not going to get into personal stories of what we hear, but student experiences of where they're getting different substances from, what their family moves with, beliefs behind that, support of society behind that, that kind of shifts and mindset amongst that. Again, that's not a dispute, we still have reality, we try to do our best to manage that, but that will be as part of that increase on the substance side included. Consistency remains really with the biased numbers, with the endless numbers, and again, hit numbers are very consistent across the forward as well. But I just wanted to highlight that just in thoughts, and that's my reflection, that's nothing relative to anything besides my reflection on my experience here in real things. I think it's really important also to recognize that state requirements are pretty black and white, so it's something for, instance, like a fight, say there's 17, right, that it was in that number, again, to break that down a little further, 11 fights may be five that are assault as defined by the state, not as defined by the criminal law, but as defined by the state, right, in terms of assault, a three now, right? So those 11 fights may represent very small physical interactions or a larger scale interaction. And again, they're 40, so I'm trying to make sure that you really understand that as well. Same thing with substances, again, the accessibility of vaping and C H C pens, and all that happens in our world, right? The accessibility, right, and the acceptability of that is definitely an increase, students' level of use. Again, it's kind of a breakdown of what we're talking about, with assaults and fights, assaults are more of a, again, not a criminal assault that would be chargeable, but it's based on the state definition. And then when we look at the substance use sets, we're broken down by multiple categories, right, confirmed use and possession. Possession numbers have increased greatly. I was here as Assistant Principal Sergeant in 2008, when we didn't have C H C pens, we didn't have a date, we didn't have any of that, right, yet. Marijuana and things of that nature, that's how you possess things, right? You don't see that anymore, right? You see it focusing on a fan or a date or any other way that it can be maxed. Not possession numbers, has gone up because again, accessibility has gone up as well. And those are barriers, those are barriers for educators, those are barriers for parents as well. And then you look at the other ones, you know, again, those things that don't as much have an impact on the overall numbers. This is just kind of, I'm going to talk a little more about this, but confirmed, this is again, going back to, go back, sorry, again, consistently across the board, the H I B numbers, as we should have reported before, our Core Period 1 and Core Period 2, so you go to about January through Core Period 1, and Core Period 2 is January to June, that's why we have these numbers provisioned for you, I'm sure you'll talk more about that as well. But again, somewhat consistent aspect of it, with a couple anomalies, as well. This is the part that really I think matters to all of us. I don't want to stand in front of you as a principal, I'm responsible and say to you that the numbers don't matter, because they do matter to me. What matters mostly is the kids and the struggles that they are bringing to us and to some that. And again, I can share the personal side of those things, but there's a lot of real struggle. And I believe this Board of Education, Dr. Ripley, the administration has poured a lot into resources for our students and for our staff and the culture of that. Some of that is just personnel, right, bodies, staff, some of that is finances, some of that is other resources that are out there as well, but I believe that, that's the case of having to do that. But we think we also want to highlight a few things as well. Although we see that the trends of the substance use, particularly everything else, pretty much remain flat, it's changing to increase. If I had a magic eight ball, I would tell you, standing here today in October, that numbers are probably going to be about the same as they are currently for our substance use space that we're at right now. And that's just a gut of that, that there are magic eight ball matters. But these are the things that matter because if it impacts one student and it changes their pathway and their trajectory of what they're doing, which is that they may be, then it matters, right? I may, maybe it does not affect the other student, but that one student does matter. We strongly believe in the setup of support, communication, relationships, and strengthening trust. There's a big gap out there post-COVID, there's a lot of brokenness out there, aspects of that exists before, that's been blocked exponentially to the level that it's at, right? That brokenness, that broken trust, that broken relationships, that broken communication, right, is relative, you know, that is our focus every single day in everything that we do. And our classroom, as Mr. Sonna talked about, like in our actions on our fall play, in theater, in our marching band, in our school communities as well. The few reasons we just talked about, I was saying to you, thank you for being willing to send money, and thank you, Doctor, for being able to support staff and our counseling areas, because we have, we recognize that any needs to arise. And that's just not with our own internal counseling, our primary counselors, school counselors, and our SAC, there's also tremendous external counselors that are out there as well. That utilization has robots, that utilization, robots, robots being finances, finances, insurance, transportation, most importantly, wellness. There's just still seems to be a gap there for wellness to try to get help on some classes and some family dynamics that we hear sees that it's okay, that this is just, and that's happening, we're up against that times, and now we get through that, and we're not going to give up in that capacity. Our Wildcat Wellness Center is a new focus initiative this year. Wildcat Wellness Center is back, I don't know if you've been in the back hallway of our room, 120, going down our deckway, that is staffed by and led by Mrs. Begon and her counselors. Ms. Malaney, Ms. Sarno, Ms. Emma have been really, really essential in getting that off the ground, and our focus on is intervention, mediation, and restoring. How do you restore that relationship that may have happened? How do you restore the hurt that you may have had, or feeling like a lot of other reasons as well? And I've talked to the staff from the beginning of the year, focused really on why. Although there's going to be consequences, and we talk about that with numbers over the course of time, how do we figure out the why? Why are you making the same decisions over and over again? And in those numbers that you don't, that you don't see, there's a lot of repeat, right? There's a lot of cycles that happens and occurs. But trying to figure out the why and restore that with the help of our counselors and administrators and our staff is really the way we're going to see some numbers. And we just started to step into that fully this year, we already have students that have been part of that program already, some of the idol success with that Wildcat Wellness Center program, and some that are still a little bit standoffish to receive now, because they have to reach halfway. Again, Mrs. Begon and our counselors, Ms. Malaney, Ms. Sarno, and Ms. Emma have done a tremendous job of making sure that that is one of our first steps. We're using it for baking education, we're using it for discipline issues that come up within students, we're using it for students that may come back after a substance out of school suspension. So there's other ways that we are doing that, stepping into that again, and we're hoping that we continue to redesign that and craft that, it's not stagnant, not like here's a one model, it's going to be for the whole year. We're really redefining that data constantly with our group over the course of time. In addition, we have, as George talked about, four student council character initiatives that take place each every month, next one's coming up in the week of 3rd. We had an N J C Wellness Summit, right, to about 15 students to Mount Crete for that summit, focusing on mental health, right, taking care of your mind, taking care of your body, taking care of others, right, be aware of that, we're hoping to take those students and by the course of the end of the year, having to teach many lessons to our N J C students. The same model, looking at, to down to number seven, 50 presentations, I go to every senior class at the beginning of the year, immediately seeing this group, but I go to every senior class, English class, beginning of the year, just to talk to them. Ms. Emma and Ms. Sarno go to our N J C classes and talk to them with the counselors, right? Now we're bringing in another level of peer leaders. We want our peer leaders to be forefront as they are already through tours, to go to those classes and talk to students and teach them lessons about critical thinking, about organization, about decision making, because they live it, right? The students want to hear that from them, they want to know what they're telling, even though they have their own faces in the student class. A multi-tiered, multi-tiered system of support, again, that goes back to where the Wildcat Wellness Center, they really designed all of them, and that data that drives that, we talked about that, with our academic data all the time, it's also extremely valuable for our behavioral data as well. And then I think we'll highlight the Red Ribbon Week recently, because the student council provided us to sponsor that. So that's a summary, I think, that was the last one, sorry, Mr. Campbell, it's been one too far. Any questions on that? There's a lot of data and I don't want to talk that much, so if you get a chance to answer any questions that you may have.
Are you seeing a lot of uptick in mental health?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. The increase is drastic, I want to guess the number right now, but over the course of time, and I do not like to go back and go back to COVID as a kind of a line, but the national data is real, and after state data is real, and local data is real, that has created a, I believe, again, this is John's first opinion, I believe that those variables were there relevant prior to that, and that disruption brought a lot of those variables to the top quicker.
So you're seeing like a lot, because I agree with you, actually, I can see that a lot of kids or young people are, is that, are they using the mental health issue for then having uptake in the substance?
Great question. I believe that we do see that and feel discussions with students, that there's a dual, a dual challenge there, substance and mental health related, which one comes first, sometimes it starts with health, but that actually is relevant, it's a great question, but that actually is relevant, and we do see it.
Can you just explain a little about what the Wildcat Wellness Center actually looks like on identity basis and who has access to that other than the students that are identified? Yes, sir, just walk in there, who's in there, how's that work?
Yep, so Mrs. Begon is our head counselor that's in there, our counselor, our SAC, that's also rooted in service by our other counselors, school counselors, and child study team members as well. So on a regular basis, a student can't just go to the Wildcat Wellness Center, they still have to go to the Nightman Office, guidance office, CST, and then they would be given a pass to go to Wildcat Wellness Center. That's more for accountability, to know what's concerned, they can't go from classrooms right to that center. Oftentimes, they'll go, hey, I need to go to 12 periods, they'll meet the counselor for whatever dimension you need, and then they go back to class. So they can use that way, they could also be used for a student's deals, that they need to be in that level, they go to guidance and say, okay, we're not going to be able to work on this challenge here, let's go up to this Begon or another counselor, a counselor, go up to Wildcat Wellness Center, right, develop and work on some of these interventions. There's also like a file report that goes to the parents, and part of that, again, is the data. Sometimes it's good, it's a partnership again, sometimes we get no response back to the parents. There is a follow-up that happens as well. It could also be used in group assistance needs, maybe to be out of class, like four or five periods on a given time period, so instead of them being out of school, they're going to be in that Wildcat Wellness Center, they're going to do an academic work, sponsored by a counselor and a staff member, but also an administrator. And then they can, they can transition back at the end of that day, or maybe they're not in place, but they can just transition back and use more time for those interventions and the issues that they face. Is that available? Good question.
Mr. Talman, I want to thank you for your personal insights, because I think they help us as coordinators. I did want to ask if you could look back to the historical data of this? So I know when I see this, I immediately jump to what can I do with my position as a board member to help improve that? I'm not sure anybody in administration, anybody staff member here, when they see this data, they see the same thing, right? There's, there's some, there's an alarming trend. Yes, we all know about the COVID years and what that did. And I know we have to report on this, this is required, and the school and the whole school environment is a big portion of a student's life, but we're, we're cogs in the whole wheel, right? There's, I guess what I'm hoping, I'm appealing to those that may be listening elsewhere, like is there's the family, there's community sports, there's community organizations, there's places of worship, there are a number of other elements in the student's life that can also affect this beyond just the school. We all have to work together to improve this. I'm not happy with this, I mean, but we can't beat ourselves up solely, you know, this is the source of the problem, we don't have all of them, we had some of them, but we all have to work together and hopefully turn this around. And this isn't just our school, or the state, but this is a, this is a much broader problem right? So there is a question in that, is this just more of an observation?
No, it's, sorry, I'm going to figure out that. The, the anecdotal piece of when we talk to students that are going through, for example, E T N A, we're going to suspect an influence, or those that go through several times, right, are pretty simple, because a lot of what we just mentioned, there is none, right? There's no attachment to anything. And I assume, since this is why I sent you this up as well, that assuming you're going to attach to, you're going to sports to attach to, or club to attach to, or beverage to attach to, or city organization to attach to, or media to attach to, you attach to something else. And we're hoping to make inroads and break those cycles for a couple of students, and again, I wish, like, all the younger students are my kids, right? I wish I could break that cycle for all of them. That's not the reality, but it is. But to your point, Mr. Talman, that's trying to find that why and develop at least one attachment to somebody here or somebody that's elsewhere is really the answer to that part. We try to partner a lot of times with the families, we have other parents that have not been very well attended over the course of time, there's some people that stop doing that, but we try to educate, we send a lot of information out, but the parents look at it and do it great, because that important stakeholder pieces is very, very real, those that have that attachment and ownership of their parents, you know, the parents tend to have a success. But yeah, that could be, so, but I can't say they're even for them, but that's just my opinion.
Does the Wellness Center, if they were to see something that they found a law, do they refer the child to the doctor, they tell the parents, you have to bring your child to the doctor, how is that?
Yes, ma'am, so if we have a student that comes, they know our counselors, administrator, or staff that they're expressing some concerns, right, that need to go to our guidance and child study team, they then assess whether to be in the Wildcat Wellness Center, that came up there, or in the counselor office, they assess there, we do a Columbia screening process, it's a nationally renowned process, it's a kind of overlight, it's always done by two counselors, and then they determine that that student needs conditional help in the moment, meaning that they're themselves or others, and maybe they have conditional, at that point, parents contacted, effectively contacted anyway later, but at that point is needed, parents contacted by administrator, they come in, to go and assess them with them, which is a difficult and challenging conversation to have, and then that student and that parent will also be sourced, which could be to, it's a health department, it could be to the hospital, it could be to their own treatment physician, right, or treating therapists that they've already seen, which we see a lot, they're going to try to inform them. So at that point, they would then be seen by the individual and then be cleared safely from the school. That, that would happen in the Wildcat Wellness Center, provide school, really, and they took that, but that's a possibility that looks like.
And then they follow, when they come back to school and there's follow-up?
When they come back to school, then the counselor, the superintendent, guys, there are follow-up, you know? There's a clearance package that comes back, but then just more importantly, there's direct conversation that comes back and has that almost like a, well, a mini R T V, that information is, okay, that happens, sometimes it's not, sometimes they need to appear to be a guidance or a Wildcat Wellness Center, and they need to record it in the classroom. Some students want to go right back into the classroom, because they want a license, and the counselor will have to ask if they need an exit warrant. Thank you.
Almost cash is a little better right now.
Almost cash is a little better, sure, yeah.
Good evening. Good to see everyone tonight. What I see here, we are required to present on the table, Mr. Talman said that our comprehensive annual presentation, the data we'll see here is from the last six months of last school year. And there's a lot of work involved in supporting students, in investigating concerns, in looking into allegations. And I want to thank everybody this year, in particular, Mr. Wright, Dr. Ripley, Mr. Talman, Ms. Sarno, Mr. Emma, Mr. Rice is here tonight. It's a lot of work, so we make sure that we're thorough, we look into every single allegation and do the best we can to support our students. You're on the board for a while, you've heard this before, but it's important, we constantly need to be reminded of what a hit is and what a hit is not. For an act to be a hit, it must be an act or a reasonable person for it to be. For an act to be a HIB, it must be an act or a reasonable person for it to be harmful or offensive. And second of all, it must be motivated by a distinguishing characteristic, body type, age, sexual orientation, race, gender, intellectual disability. But that can vary. It can be watered, that it could be political ideology, that it could be something that we've never even imagined before. But it must be motivated about a particular aspect of the alleged victim, was being harassed or something that'd be based on that. And third, the most important thing, it must have a significant negative impact on the school or on that student's education. Now, what gets tricky here is many times there's conflict and sometimes misbehavior. And a student or a parent makes a HIB allegation, and we have to tell them it wasn't a HIB. But we're very careful to tell them, that doesn't mean that misbehavior didn't occur. It doesn't mean that one student didn't treat your child inappropriately and they were, they were dealt with because it's a code of conduct. And that's very important, because sometimes when your child has had a conflict, perhaps they were mistreated, said, no, it wasn't a HIB, can feel the specimens, we're very careful to communicate that quite thoroughly. An important part of the HIB legislation that was a game changer for the state was that it covers behavior that occurs off campus. It could be the summer, it could be weekend, it could be social media. And that has gone a long way, I think, to protect students and in those situations to make school really the, the place where protection and support can be provided. Our website has a tremendous number of resources. The Free 38 Form is terrific. A lot of times, parents make a concern and it's vague whether or not they're actually suggesting it's a HIB. So we'll email them this form and say, listen, we're on it, we're investigating your concern. If you believe it may be a HIB, please feel free to fill out this form. Now, based upon the report, we may just call it a HIB, a HIB investigation right away. But if it's all gray, and say, here's the form, please let us know if you want it to be investigated as a HIB. We also have an anonymous app, which empowers people who don't want to come forward with their identity to report a concern, and those reports are taken seriously. On our website, it's our policy, our self-assessment, and other resources. So for the last half of last year, I believe Mr. Calum just presented that we had eight confirmed HIBs for the year, which means there were five confirmed HIBs from July through December 31st, and three confirmed HIBs in the second half of the year. You'll see that we investigated 28 allegations. Some schools are now exercising an option within the statute. You can make some discretion as to whether or not you investigate it. Dr. Ripley has directed us to be transparent and thorough. We investigate every single allegation. As you'll see, the vast majority of them are not HIBs, but many of them are, both have them. There's misbehavior, there's tension, there's young people not handling that conflict well, and it's addressed and it's listed. And in five instances, we never was unfounded. So if you go to the school report card, you can look at every single school in New Jersey, and they must report three things. How many allegations were made? How many times did you investigate? How many confirmed HIBs? What you'll see for High Point is the number of allegations and the number of investigations matched, because we take every allegation seriously and investigate it. But our number of confirmed HIBs is, we would like zero, but is relatively modest at eight relative to the number of investigations that we conduct. I think this is a bit redundant, Mr. Calum just did an excellent job going over the vast variety of resources. Look, everybody in this building wants to support children. And when conflict occurs to the point where it's a possible HIB, whether it is or it isn't, child study team is involved, counselor is involved, administration is involved, parents are called. We had a situation last week, it was of concern. The first thing I said to my colleague is, I spoke to the parent, they're like, I call the parent leader. We want parents to be aware of the situation, we want students to be protected, and we take it very, very seriously. It's a lot. It takes up a lot of time. We're, we're very thorough. And we, we met last week with a, our school climate safety team, where we have students, Eric, teacher, talk about how we can be better in this area. Any questions about the HIB process?
Any similar questions? You said a total number of investigations, you said 20, but the chart said 21, and I think that Mr. Calum said 20 equals.
Sure. Would like to go back. Apologizing if I just spoke for the recording period here, 21 investigations, three confirmed.
This is the first half of year of other?
Yes. So Mr. Calum presented it was the year in full. Any other questions about? Great, perfect. Just one other thing I want to mention. On October 13th, for our October Consensus Day, we had a great day. Many of our staff went to Frank for 5:10, nearly posted countywide service program, primarily focused for elective disciplines. And here at High Point, we hosted for core academic subjects from our four partner schools in the area, a workshop. And we came into this room in the morning, we had coffee and bagels, and we said, first of all, we're a pretty big district, like we're about third in county. And I said to the middle school teachers, you get them when they're fiery and evolving as young people. And the age group you deal with has its unique set of challenges. And they come here and in a blink of an eye, they're leading us as young men and women. So to be in a room with 100 educators who are working in common to support that same group of students from grade six through 12, it was a really nice experience. We had an icebreaker in here, Dr. Zerendo led the group through an icebreaker. But then we broke off, and what was most important was subject-specific teachers, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, all got to get together. And the most important goal was to establish relationships. Both face, look in the air, share, you know, contacts, talk about your best practices. Eventually, the hard work is aligning curriculum and making sure that there's greater consistency among the schools we send us, and that we're able to best support the students that come here. But relationships was key. It was really a very enjoyable day. So I want to thank our, our partner schools. We've since met as a group, we meet once a month now, and it was a very, very nice day bringing together colleagues from five school districts who talked about their. Okay, thanks, Ed.
Okay, moving into other business, we have one item, the recognition of superintendent that the board approves a memorandum of agreement between education and law enforcement officials reviewed for the 2025, 2026 school year, along with the Article 12 affirmation, which can be reviewed at the link as Mr. Calum. I will make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz? Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Lombard?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, moving to action items, curriculum reconstruction and technology, that moved on by the Schuman. All right, in the interest of brevity, I will recognize one through three and move four through seven. One, two, and three are the faculty attendance, school attendance, student attendance, and suspension reports for September. Four is a recommendation to approve harassment and intimidation bullying reports for the period September 23rd through October 28th, 2025. Five is a recommendation to approve field trips listed on attached roster. Six is a recommendation to approve professional development activities, as attached. Seven is a recommendation to approve the revised 2025, 2026 school calendar, which reflects a half-day schedule for students on January 20, 23, midterms. And at the seven, okay, so I will make that motion to move four through seven. May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Lombard?
Yes.
Passes.
Next, personnel.
Yep.
Yes.
Put those all into the files together. Number one, approving substitutes for the 2025, 26 school year, Andrew Vogel and Crystal Whitman. Number two, Mark Russell advances on the guide from MA 30 to MA 45. Number three, approving the extended sixth F M L A leave of absence. Number four, medical leave of absence. Number five, approving Mr. Kenneth Hoyt as a full-time custodian. The annual salary, the salary of $50,166. And number six, accepting the resignation notification of Melissa Olden, a parent. I'm making a motion seeking a second?
Second.
Any questions? I'm sorry, who is the second?
Nancy.
Don't let us, it's a tie.
Any questions? Roll call. Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Lombard?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Passes.
Under extracurricular, I will move one through five. One is a recommendation to approve following extracurricular appointments for 2025, 2026 school year. It's listed. Two is a recommendation to approve Roger Foco as a volunteer ski racing coach for the current school year. And three is a recommendation to approve Ben Kapler as a volunteer wrestling coach for the current school year. And four is a recommendation to approve the following individuals to fill the need of a piano accompanist for various events during the current school year, and they are as listed. And item five is a recommendation to approve Nick Olizos as the unified basketball coach for the 2025, 2026 school year, at a slight amount of $1,000, which is paid through a unified grant. So I'll make that motion one through five.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I just want to recognize our volunteer coaches, and particularly here, as listed, but really across the board. In many cases, without volunteer coaches, either members of our staff or even sometimes members from, from the community that are probably credentialed, we can't run some of the programs that we do. So I just want to recognize them. Who's that?
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Lombard?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay. May I go back to you, Ms. Orsi, for the one new policy?
We have one new policy, students' sun protection. I'm making a motion seeking a second?
Second.
Sorry, who's the second? Nancy. Okay. Any questions, Phil?
Talked about it last time.
Yeah.
Roll call. Okay, Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Lombard?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, we have no negotiations or buildings and grounds of action items. I do want to, like to publicly recognize Captain Koppus' letter that went out to our community regarding an issue we have with, it's a buildings and grounds item, right? And we're very hopeful that it brings about some change. So thank you, you and Mr. Vanstone, for working that area. I won't go into it in detail. People got the letter. So brings us to finance. I will move one through eight, finance. One is a recommendation to accept a report of the board secretary, business administrator for the month of September 2025. Item two is a recommendation to accept a report of the treasurer for the month of September 2025. I guess we got that in mid-time.
Yes.
Item three is a recommendation for the transfers, a minimum expansion transfer report for September 2025. And four is a recommendation to approve for payment, the attached schedule of audit bills dated October 28th, 2025. Five is a recommendation to approve the adult education agency account, athletic account, cafeteria account, construction account, principals, petty cash account, scholarship account, school store, and student activities reconciliations for September 2025. Item six is a recommendation to approve wanted excavation, excavating company to perform work related to winter maintenance, snow removal for 2025, 2026 school year. And item seven is a resolution to be resolved, the Board of Education gives express permission to EI associations and representatives thereof to access, revise, and update the district's long-range facility plan. And item eight is recommended that the board approves and authorizes the execution of following tuition contracts between High Point, as the sending district, and the following districts, as listed. So I will make that motion on page eight. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on any of those? I wanted to note that item seven was a requirement for us to get our long-range facility plan updated. It does not indicate any necessarily long-range agreement, right? Beyond that, okay.
Excellent.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Lombard?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, Ms. Palasek?
Transportation. Really, for transportation, there are, how many are there?
Twenty-two.
I'd like to move, motion is one through 22, in one vote. One is, can I do it when Joe did it?
Meg.
All items are relevant to the 25, 26 school year in regard to transportation contracts for this district, and also any joint agreements that the district may have with other schools. Everything is in accordance to appropriate statutes and in accordance with any law.
Excellent.
I make a motion seeking a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Lombard?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's our action items. We have the correspondence of miscellaneous items. So our second public comments section of the evening, same rules, plot as the prior. Please state your name and address, and I don't see anybody in the room, so I'm going to ask if we have any virtual comments. Seeing none, may I have a motion to close public comments? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any imposed? Wonderful. Any non-committee board member reports or comments?
The next comment. About the numbers that you, that John presented after COVID. And I, I feel like COVID was devastating to like our school, our community. It really undermined, like I think back to that time, and it was scary. And I think in a lot of ways, like I'm still kind of coming out of that. And I feel like we don't even have the words to talk about it. Like what happened? You know, what kind of, who died, who did we lose, what relationships, what groups did we lose? Attachments, you were talking about. I just, I really don't think we, we give it enough credit in some way to that, how much it affected our lives. I just want to say, there's a reason for those numbers.
Yeah.
It's real. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Sure, anyone else? May I have a, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.